Over there, is that...
Okay.
All right. So I'd like to welcome to this evening, it's Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to an end. It is... What date is it? August 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 31st, 2018 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in here? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We now have an opportunity for public comment, and seeing no public, we'll move on to reports and discussions. We'll start with the 2018-19 tax levy and tax rate overview.
So tonight, on our action agenda, we will be, as we do mid-August each year, we will be adopting the resolution to confirm the tax rolls, authorize a tax levy for 2018-19. Just want to remind everybody that those actions that you're going to take tonight are based on the budget that was approved by the taxpayers, the voting taxpayers at the annual meeting in mid-May of 2018. The budget hasn't changed at all. It is that exact budget. It is within the confines of the New York State tax levy cap. But there have been some changes, not at the school districts doing, but rather relative to assessments and equalization rates that I asked Tom to come here this evening and spend a few minutes explaining to you as board members and to anybody in the public who might have been here tonight or who may see this on YouTube channel to get a better understanding of that. So some of you may want to scooch to the side to see better. I'm going to sit over there so I can see better. Or you have the information that is in your binder, okay? You see that it starts with 4.1. Flip to the next page. Because that will... If you don't want to sit over there, you can still sit here. There's nothing different at all. So if you go to that, right? The percentage change due to assessments. Every year around August 1st, I get a listing from Dutchess County of our assessments. And basically, I start the year off with the prior year in nothing in assessment. What occurs then is I take the assessments and I paste them in. And what I'm going to do is I'm just going to do a quick cut and paste here. Let's do that. Now, one of the things that you're seeing right here now is what are the changes in assessment from year to year? And we can review this by looking at it and... Let's see what has occurred this year. In the town of Rhinebeck, their assessments went up a little over $8 million. This is a factor typically of reassessing their properties, adding new properties. It's property sold, the new ones come on. It's potential that the assessor will update it based on the selling price, but that's strictly by the assessor. The other thing that changes on the assessments, which you don't see there, are tax exemptions. Okay? Now, one factor is increasing the value of our assessments, and that's STAR. Remember, STAR is an exemption on your tax bill, but not for new homeowners. Anybody buys a new home now, you don't get the STAR exemption right away. It comes off the books. Okay? They have to apply through the town and then submit to New York State, and then New York State will send you a check for the amount of your STAR reimbursement. But they have to pay it upfront, and then they get reimbursed by New York State. So it's a little bit different than it was years ago. But what we see here, we have an increase of about 2/3 of a percent in the town of Rhinebeck. Clinton went up 1.43%. Hyde Park went down a little, $3,600. It could very well have been just a little exemption or a change in somebody's property value. Mylan is up about the same as what Rhinebeck is, 2/3. But then we see Red Hook and Stanford up 2.5 and 3%, which is good to see. Now, we'll look in the lower left-hand or right-hand corner, we see 0.84%. So our properties went up by 0.84%, and this gets tied back somewhat to the tax levy growth factor that goes into our tax cap. They anticipate that we're going to see an increase in the property value of new properties, not old properties, new properties. So one of the things that we'll have to look out for is how this changes. But overall, 0.84%, that's a pretty good increase over the past few years. That's probably one of our highest increases for the past probably five years. We've usually typically had anywhere from about 1/4 of a percent to about 3/4 of a percent, but this year is a little bit higher than average, which is good. The more you have in assessments, it does lower the tax rate for everybody else. There's new properties to help pay for the taxes, so it helps spread that out and to apportion it between each of the towns. Now, the big thing that has occurred this year to the school district is equalization rates. And what I'm going to do is we start them at zero, and I'm just going to move them over. So, as we see under 1718 here, five of our six school districts had 100% evaluation, meaning the state thought that the evaluations that the assessor put on the properties were appropriate at market level, 100%. This year, though, we do see two changes. Okay? So four towns, Clinton, Mylan, Red Hook, and Stanford, all remained at 100%. But it did change for two of our municipalities. Rhinebeck went from 100% to 92%. It's a negative 8% is your equalization rate, it's going down. But in reality, that means your property value just went up 8%. It has the opposite effect. Equalization rate goes down, property values go up. So a home in Rhinebeck that was assessed for $100,000 last year is still assessed at $100,000, but the state is valuing that at $108,000. So that's really the difference. So the state is in control of your equalization rates, and they put that value on there. And what they do is they go around and they test the different municipalities. They look at what was sold the prior year, compared it to the taxable value that was on the books, and lo and behold, that's how they come up and determine whether or not. So at some point, and I don't know how long ago, but probably what happened is they looked at the assessment rolls of Rhinebeck and Hyde Park and determined the taxable values were undervalued. And so the state puts an artificial number, the equalization rate, and boop, now everybody's value just went up 8%. It does have a huge fact as we go forward. But just to see how that plays out where four of our six towns remain the same. Two towns are valued higher than they were last year, and that's with no property increase. Yes, Lisa?
I don't know if this has any bearing on what you're talking about, but I know that the town of Rhinebeck is in the midst of a property reevaluation because of the perception that the assessments are not reflective of the value of the properties.
Yeah. And I went to that meeting that they had with the community residents, and they had an official from the state there. And basically, he said what you're just saying here is that the values of the towns are undervalued as far as the taxable value, and so the state does put a number on it. Unfortunately, every municipality does their assessments typically by an individual or a contractor who have their own methods. They get taught the same way, but whether or not they apply it the same way, it would be great if all of New York State had one assessment method and everybody's at 100%. It doesn't matter, but this can create problems. And in the Arlington School District, 20 years ago, they had problems with a town called Polkway. And what would happen is their equalization rate would go down 40%. It means their tax bills just went up 40% on average. And if you're an escrow, not only do you have to collect 40%, but they anticipate it's going to go up 40% again, so they give you an 80% increase on your taxes. But then the following year, their equalization rate would go down by 35%. It was a battle back and forth. And one of the things that most towns now do is do 100%. But what's happened really recently, a lot more is just as we've cut back on personnel, New York State has too, and they don't go out into the field like they used to. They used to be in the field a lot, checking these values and everything, and it can get out of hand, and once they find it, it's time to make a correction. So I do understand what the town is trying to do. It's the right thing to do because the state says you're undervalued. And it will have some impact on the school district because it doesn't have the impact on the town or the village because everything's contained within the town and village. There's no equalization amongst the individual homeowners. But when it comes to school districts, and we have six municipalities, that's where equalization rates come in. Towns don't use them at all. School districts do because we're overtime. Now, the other place equalization rates are used is with the county taxes. County also uses equalization rates too. But let's see what the effect is, because the effect of the change in equalization rate has a tremendous impact on the value of the town and the district. So here we have last year's assessment and values. As you see, five of the six are at 100%. The assessments were a little over $1.7 billion, and as we see last year, the value is $1,712 million, very close to each other. Now, we come forward to the next year. Our increase between the two is about $14 million, not too different, a little bit more than typical. A $14 million increase has been very good in typical years, but now we have to apply the equalization rate. Can you see what we did here in Rhinebeck? Take the $1.3 million, really basically times one, you get $1.2 million. But now their assessments went up a little bit, about $8 million, but your equalization rate went down to 92, increasing the value by 8%. And as we look overall, it has increased the value of Rhinebeck by about $123 million. Overall, 9.42%. So the value of Rhinebeck overall went up 9.42. But as you see, the other schools, other municipalities also did. The other big one being Hyde Park, which saw a decrease in value overall, but that equalization rate turned around and actually put 3.48% increase on their homes. Okay? So, but overall, the entire value of our school district went up by 7.5%. It does have an effect on us down the road. Not yet, but down the road, because that becomes a part of your combined wealth ratio. Remember, 50% of your combined wealth ratio is based on the value of your town, of all the properties. So 7.52. It will take many years before that gets up there. They're about five years behind, so it'll be a little while before it affects our wealth ratio. And that changes every year, not only based on what we do here, but every single school district across the state.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
Why won't our combined wealth ratio catch up to...
Well, it will, but it takes a number of years.
But why is that?
It's just they're behind.
Oh, so they just don't recalculate it?
They do every year, but they're like five years behind. So it kind of... They're a little bit further behind. And what happens too is that they're probably about three years behind, to tell you the truth. I mean, I could go back and really make sure, but it takes a few years before those numbers come up through to actually affect our wealth ratio. So the big thing comes to the tax rates. So here we see the previous year, once again, okay? This is not the previous year. This is the values, what we had before. This little thing that's out here, adjustment, surprised no one's ever asked me about that. There's a little $4,500 adjustment. And that is for... In the school district, the churches where the clergy live, okay, is a taxable property, but they only value them at $1,500. Don't ask me why, but that's what it is. They don't pay it, but you got to pass it on to the town in which they are from. So it doesn't have a huge effect on the tax rates, but it's one of those things, is you can see the tax rate here. If you just look at the last couple, it's 127, 127, 127, 127, 183. So they do pick up just a hair, but it doesn't match up with the other 100%. But, so let's get back to this. So what happened here now is all those calculations before and here, we're now with the $1.8 billion taxable valuation. The next step is you need to break it down by towns. And what happened last year, and I wish I brought it with me, I forgot to, Rhinebeck used to pick up 75% of the school district, is now picking up 77%. So they're picking up an additional 2% more. So that's what happens now, is we're still collecting the same amount of money, but because of the value in Rhinebeck has increased, it's going to push more taxes toward those homeowners. And opposite ways, the other four, five districts are going to go down because they're less of a percentage of the overall school district. So, you know, Hyde Park is a little over 1%. Mylan is under 4%. They were above 4% last year. Now they're below 4%. Not that that really matters too much, but that's how you then break it out. So then you figure out how much each of the towns contribute to the school district, and then you divide that by the value, and then you get your tax rates. So here's the tax rates. Now, for last year, you'll see these, they are remaining the same as far as their tax levies. They all stayed at 100%. They're all going to have the same tax rate. But we had a change at Hyde Park. They're picking up a bigger value of it, but it's still showing as a negative just because overall Rhinebeck was 3/4 of it, had an increase in the value to their town, so they have to pick up an additional amount of it. So even though our school district went only up 3.23% is the levy, we are looking at a 4.36 with the town and the village of Rhinebeck. So as we see here, town of Rhinebeck is going to pick up the increase while the other four schools, five, four of them going down just under 4%. And Hyde Park, even though their value went up, their rate is going down to 0.62%, it's going down. So overall, our tax rate is actually going down by 4%, which you think would be good, but that's because the value of the town went up. And if you go back in the history of Rhinebeck, you'll see a couple of times where there's a precipitous drop in the tax rate overall, and that's because there's been revaluations. Or one was due to revaluation, another one was a shot to the real estate. That was about eight, nine years ago, there was a shot to it. So there was a revaluation done just a couple of years before that, and then the real estate fell out during the Great Recession, the start of that, where property values went down quite a bit. You can see that on our history of tax rates, that all of a sudden, we actually had some negatives. The school district never had a negative tax levy. It's always been a positive one. But if there's more value, your values of your houses go up 8% while the tax rates only go up 4, something's going down. And this was the effect based really, truly, only on changes in equalization rate. Their assessments are pretty much the same. What will probably happen when the town does their reassessment, they will go back to 100%. But the question comes in is, what is that taxable value after they get done with everything? Some properties will go up, some will go down. In the end, it's whatever the grand total is. One of the things I printed out too, that doesn't quite get into... I'm using taxable value. There is value that's not taxable, and that's the nonprofits, STAR, veterans exemptions, senior citizens exemptions, solar exemptions. Those are all taken out of this. They're not even in it. That's the taxable value. The overall assessment to the entire school district, like I say, is valued at 1.8, is like almost 3, is because there's properties that aren't taxed. For us, for example, the school district, the school district buildings are worth, I believe, $80 million, but you don't get any taxes from it. Nobody does. The hospital is partly taxed and probably not, but the untaxed part's like, I think it was $110 million of the hospital is not taxable. I don't remember how much is taxable, but it's considerably lower. So what they start is with the overall number and how much then is deducted from it. Just as anybody has a STAR, typically will have anywhere from $30,000 to $60,000 depending on the municipality, which is taken off of the value of your home. If you buy the home now, you don't get that exemption. So it doesn't come out. You'll get it back the other way, but it increases the value of the taxable part. So it does increase your overall value of the town because it's no longer exempt. Only the current homeowners in that. So as soon as you move out, the next person that comes in does not get STAR. They have to apply for it. It doesn't come off the tax rolls. You get a check back. Remember, STAR does not affect your town or county at all either, so those values get added back in when they do the town and county. So are there any other questions or concerns or any other type of follow-up you'd like me to provide you? It's not... I mean, this is a continual process. It actually happens more often than not, changing the equalization rate. Actually, up until about 10 years ago, equalization rates were changing for everybody every year. But state got to a point, you're at 100, you're certified at 100, we agree with you. But they've been starting to go back into the field and look because things, the value of your town hasn't changed in 10 years. That doesn't seem right. So the state is being a little bit more attentive to that because there's been complaints from other school districts. I'm saying this is what happened here, but there's some complaints where somebody complained that the town's undervalued, and because they're undervalued, I don't live in that town, I live in another one, I'm valued correctly, I have to pay more taxes now because they're not valued right. It can come from a complaint from outside of your district. You don't know the reason why they're looking into it. The whole thing with calendars started from a phone call from a parent in Westchester who didn't think the kids were in school enough. So they started looking, and then that one school district said, "No, you're not going enough." So bam, the entire state's being looked at. So the same thing could happen across the state when they see what they consider an injustice, then they'll start looking at things a little bit closer. Just like with everywhere else, when someone leaves or retires at the state, sometimes they don't replace them. So that office that had 10 people may now only be five people, and they're just doing enough to get ahead. But I think they're finding out that it creates some issues.
So Tom, just off the top of your head, the tax rate per thousand is going up in the town of Rhinebeck about 71 cents?
Correct. Yeah.
In the last couple of years, do you recall what that increase has been, just so we can gauge for our community? You know, I'd like to set an expectation for them so that when their tax bill arrives, they don't...
I don't know it off the top of my head, but I can definitely put that together as to what these rates were for all communities over the past 10 years. So you could see...
It's not so shocking.
Yeah. I mean, you know, 4.36, you know, it's not too bad, but then again, it's above what we expected. We said the tax levy was going to go up 3.23. We had an 85% additional increase in assessments. You know, if everything had remained the same, it probably would have been about 2.5%. But because of the equalization rate change, that drove it to the town of Rhinebeck and away from the other five municipalities. So, you know, if you're living in all the other five municipalities, I hope they're happy when they open it up. No one's happy to open up a tax bill. I don't like opening up mine either, but when they do open it up, at least five of those municipalities will see that their rates went down. Unfortunately, our biggest contributor to our tax levy is the increase. You know, so like I said, they went from about 75% of the school district now up to 77%. So that's a humongous increase for any municipality in any year. So it's a big one. But what happens with the revaluation, it's anybody's guess. The value of the entire town could go down, it could go up. It's yet to be seen exactly where it... The other big thing is exemptions. What's exempt? Should it still be exempt? Is that what you classified as a nonprofit is not nonprofit? Some school districts have those issues where the property is supposedly nonprofit, but the nonprofit has rented it out to a for-profit entity. You can't do that. Then it needs to come off the tax roll as a non-taxable property.
Ag exemptions too are being looked at.
Yeah, ag exemption is another good one that really needs to be looked at. You know, solar, you got a solar, those solar panels, are they still there, those type of things? It's a chance to go back and look at everybody's property and look at their exemptions to make sure that it's accurate. And it's hard, and it won't be completely accurate anyway. So, you know, one of the biggest things, just to let you know, is we're going to be the first community that will be affected by the revaluation, meaning, and I think this is going to be not next tax, not for next year, 1920, but 2021, is when they're going to see their tax bills with their new assessments.
You mean the first municipality, not the first community?
Yeah.
The school district before the town or the village?
Yes. We're going to... We're going to be the first tax bill with the new assessments.
I guess.
Now, remember what happens typically. There will be a number of people who will fight for their properties, and you overvalued it. A lot of times, it's called tax tertiary. Tax tertiary really, really means from prior years. But one of the things that will create an issue that year will be the refunds. If it's deemed that it's incorrect and we have to refund money, it comes out of the tax levy. So if we have a levy right now of $28.8 million, and let's just use that as a figure, it's quite possible that I could be refunding $100,000, $200,000 as people fight their assessments. And that comes out of the current. I can't take that out of reserve or anything like that. It has to come out of the current tax levy. And that will cause an issue for us that year, depending on whether it's good or bad. You don't know. It could come out very well, and if the people who've done the assessment... It could come out very well, and if the people who've done the assessments have done a great job, it shouldn't change. But, you, you, we all know people will fight and continue to fight until they get some adjustment, if possible. But just please be aware, that particular year, we could be refunding monies to taxpayers, which comes out of our tax levy. So you may not have all the money you think that we're going to get from the tax levy. I mean, it happens every year, but they're little, it's okay. I think last year we actually only had two erroneous assessments in total. I think it was about $8,000. We had some tax tertiary's from prior year, which weren't a whole lot, but last year, out of our original 2.27.9 million, that's a 17, 18 tax levy, we, we, we were about $8,000 less. We collected $8,000 less. One of the things also remember, the county makes us whole, okay? So any taxes not paid by our taxpayers is paid by the county. So we're always made whole. Because the taxpayer doesn't pay, doesn't matter. We're going to still get the money from the county. Then the county will continue to go after that homeowner or property owner. I shouldn't use property owner, it's not always a homeowner. That property owner to pay their bill, plus interest. And after a few years, I think it's three years, if you haven't paid it, the county can auction it off, or the town. I don't know really, county makes us whole, but I'm not sure, I don't know if the town or, or the county does. I think the county does. The county sells the property, or someone buys it. It's whatever, they refund themselves the property taxes they paid to us, plus interest. And whatever's left over is sent to the homeowner and say, it's not your property anymore. You didn't pay your taxes. That's a whole foreclosure type of thing, and, not, not foreclosure, it's, it's a tax levy. And if you haven't paid it after a while, though, they don't like to do it, but occasionally they do do it. I don't think they've done it too often. Not too often. So there's a lot of properties out there the county pays for and hasn't, never collected the money. But that's on their finding side. Other questions, any type of follow-up besides looking at tax rates from previous years to see how they compare to each other over the years? Because even though tax rates typically have been remaining the same across the board year after year, as far as each of this pretty much are in line with each other, it's one of the changes in equalization rates. Those are the ones that throw it way off, as we see here. Yes?
What is, this is at zero, but what is the prior year, prior year of the tax referred to?
Occasionally, what happens is, the county forgets to put properties on the roll, or the town didn't get it to the county in time. But there was a property there that did not get taxed and should have been taxed. And it's only happened a few times. So what they end up doing is saying, listen, you were going to get a tax bill, but because of an error, whether it's at the town or at the county level, it's a prior year adjustment. So what they say to us is the following. We're going to bill these people for, let's say it was $4,000. We're going to bill them for the $4,000. On top of the tax bill they're going to get this year, they're going to get another bill for $4,000. They're in contact with them, letting them know that this is going to occur, because really, a lot of times the homeowner thinks, ooh, that one impacts me, very good. They usually catch up to you. And what happens though is, they're going to do an extra tax bill to these people for $4,000. And we said, well, you can't collect the $4,000 because this homeowner's paying two bills. Last year's bill he should have paid you, which would have spread everything out amongst everybody. Now granted, it was pennies. And this year, we're going to reduce your tax levy by that amount because all those other people paid those extra pennies to you, well this year, we're giving those pennies back to them. Like I said, we've only had to do it once or twice since I've been here. I think it was just a couple of years ago. So I put that in there just in case one of them comes up again. It's gets, it gets more complicated when it comes to that, when you figure out the taxes. Because you got to keep in the levy, but not include it in the tax rate.
So at the risk of oversimplifying, if I were to speak to a community member who says, how come my taxes went up more than I expected? Would a fair response, and, and that they live in Reinbeck, would a fair response be to say, you know, everybody in Reinbeck saw an increase of about 71 cents per thousand, right? $1,000 of, of the value of their property because the state decided that Reinbeck properties in general were not assessed fairly, and so when they adjusted the assessment, it meant that Reinbeck was carrying a, a greater load among the six municipalities that, is that...
I think there's an easier explanation. I think the English, the easiest one is what we have up there. The state determined that the value of Reinbeck properties were understated by 8%. So they applied a factor which increased everybody's value of the property by 8%. So the state has artificially raised everybody's property value by 8% in the town and village of Reinbeck.
And the way that filters out is 71%... 71 cents per thousand?
Yes. Right. So it's, I mean, it's not all attributed to, to the equalization rate because we did raise our levy by 3.23. So that's part of it, but that additional amount, or what's not being picked up by the negative 4%, that should have been about 3.23. So, you know, a homeowner's expecting in Clinton or wherever, that they're expecting probably it should have been about 3%, and now they're going to see a negative 4. Well, that difference between the 3 positive and the negative 4 is being picked up by Reinbeck. And it's all due to the equalization rate. Nothing else other than the equalization rate. And they have no control over it. I mean, the state comes in and they put a determination. They do have the ability to fight these things. There are methods to do it. And that was what was happening when I was talking about the town of Popeye. They were fighting it, and all of a sudden, you went from their equalization rate going down by 40%, which increased, and then turn around the next year, it's going back up 35%. This was a back and forth battle every year. But they would go to court, it would be adjudicated, it could change, but the taxpayer, the school district can't do anything about that. We need to collect the taxes now. It's the following year that they make an adjustment, then you never know. Because next year, I've seen it happen. I've seen equalization rates greater than 100. That you're un, you're, you're overvaluing the houses. And that's what occurred sometimes in the, in the Great Recession where the values of homes down, went down, but the, the town kept it at 100%. And they come in, wait, wait a second, that's not right. You're, you're, you're 10% lower, so your equalization rate becomes 110. The town goes by 10, down by 10%. But in, as far as a village or a town is concerned, it has no impact on them, because they're only taxing the people they do. It's when you get to taxing authorities that span over multiple municipalities. Sometimes it's just another municipality. And sometimes it's six, I've seen up to 10. You go to Arlington, they go 20 deep because they got homestead and non-homestead in every single one. So homestead is, that keeps the rates down, no, no, you don't want to go to homestead, non-homestead. Your husband has to deal with that. Wapping's is another big one. Where, really, homestead is for the homeowners. They will only go up so far. The non-homestead, meaning second homes, commercial properties, go up more. They make up the difference. They get, they get charged more money. It happens down in, in Florida. Very good. If you're a resident of Florida, that's your home, you're on a homestead, you are capped by how much is your taxes, your property taxes will go up. It's all the other ones that the non-resident homeowners, the people who have places down there, but don't live there, and the businesses pick up, all the above. So overall, you might only get a 2% increase, but all the non-homesteads went up 10%. And the ones are freaking out, but they're not the one who can, they can't, they can't vote. Only the homeowners can vote. So it's a nice little system they have, which really keeps taxes for homeowners down, but those who aren't can, can face the brunt of it.
Anybody else have any questions for Tom in this particular topic?
Sorry to be a bearer, but that, that's, that's how tax rates work, and, and I think we'll see some changes over the next year. Remembering next year, we're still using the old assessments for the town of Reinbeck. I can't say what may happen to the equalization rate. I have no idea. The state may just keep it at 92, knowing that they're going through a revalue, where they may say, oh, no, you're actually, you know, your value's even gone down a little bit, you know, your value of your house has gone up more, your equalization rate goes down. Where they may say, nah, you know, actually it's gone, you're, 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 you never know. The state can do that. But the state's been fairly constant lately when it comes to equalization rates. Pretty much they want you at 100%. I really wish there was a statewide system that went by formula, everybody got assessments all the same across the board.
Well, we got you warmed up, Tom.
Now, why don't you tell us about the school district charitable fund?
All right. Do you have slides for that, or? No. No slides for that one. No, you do have it in your, your board pack in here. Comes after the tax rates. So the next part, and it's a, it's a memo from our legal team who sent out to us a notice on August 2nd in regards to the charitable funds. Now, there are a couple of school districts that have charitable funds right now, but typically they've been set up for scholarships and that type. It's never been set up for this particular purpose.
This was before this came out?
Before this came out. There are a couple of school districts, not a lot, but there's a couple who have charitable funds already. Not that I'm saying that they're doing it. I've contacted everybody who got back to me in Dutchess County, as far as I know, no one is doing it in Dutchess County. I don't know even sure if anybody in New York State is doing it until IRS makes a determination. But we, we should go through it because it, it, it can have an impact. Just to let everybody know what this is, is with the, with the new federal law that deals with, with income taxes, one of the provisions was, is only, you could deduct a maximum of $10,000 for state and local income and real property taxes. Okay? It's called SALT. You've never heard of it. S-A-L-T, SALT. So this went into effect, and what, and a lot of homeowners throughout New York State pay more than $10,000 in property taxes. So this would limit the amount of money that they would be able to deduct on their federal and state income tax returns at the end of the year. So New York State Legislature adopted some changes to their tax law, which basically said, using a charitable fund, you could collect your property taxes through the charitable fund and give them a waiver for their property taxes that they didn't have to pay. IRS has come out and said, we don't think this will work, and I'll, I'll get to that in a little while. But let me just first talk about what this charitable fund, what would have to happen. First of all, you'd have to create a charitable fund by resolution. Very simple to do. It's not a hard thing to do. But those contributions that we receive, it gets really, really complicated. We have a number of issues that would, would cause some issues for the school district and, and that. And not to say that can't be overcome, but it definitely is a lot more effort on our tax collector's side and from the business office as far as how this is treated. So just to let you know, the IRS has given notice about these proposed regulations, about how the IRS would treat those monies paid, and they forewarned us that there is a strong possibility that this would not be accepted as a, as a charitable contribution, charitable deduction. So you're capped at $10,000 for local and property, but when it comes to charitable donations, sky's the limit. So the idea, the get-around was to donate the money to the school district. The school district would then give you, there's certain forms that you would give them, basically, it's an acknowledgement of the charitable contribution, and then they would also get a claim of credit towards their property taxes. Now, a couple of things to go with this, which makes it very, very confusing. I don't want to say very confusing, just think about it. So let's just give up the $10,000. That's what your property taxes is, just, just using a number, just because it's easier. $10,000. That's what they would pay to us, $10,000. Well, no, they have to pay us a 5% kicker, because we can only accept up to 95% of the donation, 95% of the donation as property tax. The 5% comes basically as service fee. So I mean, it would create additional income to us if we did go into this. Give you an example, with that $10,000, they would actually have to pay us $10,526.32 to pay off their $10,000. So they're giving us an extra $526.32 for the right for us to give them a note that said they're, they're paid off of the $10,000. So they have to give us a little extra. Now, it becomes a real big problem because these forms, you have to fill out as they come in. So our tax collector, we're either, the taxpayer's, we have to come back into the district to get this done, or the tax collector needs to be located down at MNT Bank, but then I'm going to have to man the seat back at her office because at that time of the year, she's doing transportation accounts payable. She needs to be in one place, she can't be in both places at the same time. I mean, if we do have to do it, we'll figure a way around it, but it, it will create a bit of a problem that way. So also in this is, we would put this money into the charitable fund, which in the case, I just can't invest it in anything I wanted. It's considered a reserve, and I can only invest in certain things. I wouldn't think it would be too much of a difference, but what happens, every time I wanted that money, I have to come to you, the board, to approve me to take money out of the reserve to put it into the, to the general fund to pay for our bills off. A couple other issues that come along with this, because we have some unique things that happen. We have an installment, which really complicates. People could pay by September 15th, one half of their, of their bill, and then the other half gets paid to the county and equal, equal the next, of the following year. And they get 5% is added to it for this right to do this. The question is, could we accept half of that money? Okay? What's the county going to do? Is the county going to set up a charitable donation, collect the money and send it on to us? I don't know. It's coordinated with them. And also, if you completely miss and it gets rebuilt on your town and county, is the town going to do the same thing? Is it a charitable donation? Are they going to send us the money? It gets really complicated how we do it here. There's some school districts that do it from beginning to end. It doesn't get turned over to anybody. So, you know, one of the things, you know, so our local government's also going to be doing this, also for their town and county, tax payments themselves is another question. School district are doing it, the town and county says no. So the other big factor is going to be escrow accounts from the banks. So this is how it's supposed to work. So the escrow bank will give us what they collected for that property, and they will pay their property taxes. But the homeowner can pay us that, their bill, completely in total, plus the extra 5%, five, a little bit more than 5%. So they get 95%. So what would happen in that case is if they want to do that from an escrow bank, escrow's going to pay it, we're going to pay off everybody's tax bills as we will always do. The homeowner wants to, they can come and pay the amount that's needed, and then I need to refund the bank the money. And it's up to the bank to refund it back to the, to the property. But I'm not refunding the money from the bank back to us, because it didn't come from there. I got to go back to the bank, and then is the bank going to pay it back? I've got to go back to the bank, and then is the bank going to pay it back? The homeowner, just another added complication. So, it's, a couple of the other things about this was that, first of all, like I say, the biggest thing right now is, is a notice that we did receive from, it seems like you didn't have this one. This is something individually, because when this came out, I asked all the other school districts to find out what exactly they're doing. Are they going to do this or not? You know, we don't, if everybody's doing it or not, that wouldn't look good. But nobody in this county at this time is doing this at all. And what they basically did is, this came out on August 2nd, and just a day prior, the Journal of Accountancy, okay, one of our other school district's business official gets this in the mail all the time, and he actually reads it, the Journal of Accountancy. And it actually was an article in regards to the IRS clarifying the rules on payments in lieu of state and local taxes. And basically, from the IRS, it says, "This newer proposed legislation by states," because New York is not the only state, there's a few other states that have also tried to do this, New Jersey I know being one of them, "would purportedly allow taxpayers to make transfer of funds controlled by state and local governments in exchange for credits against state and local taxes that the taxpayers required to pay. In New York, local governments and school district can create charitable funds and offer donations of property tax credit." But one of the things, it says, "The IRS has warned taxpayers and state and local governments, despite these attempts through state legislation to circumvent the new limitations on deductions of state and local taxes, the proper treatment and deductibility of these payments will be governed by federal tax law. It's noted that it will apply a substance over form analysis to determine how these payments will be treated for federal income tax purposes, suggesting they will not treat these as charitable donations, contributions." So, if the IRS doesn't do it, it's a whole lot of work, and they have to refund all this money back to everybody, and it can create all sorts of other loads and bulk loads of issues.
What's the deadline for us to create the fund if we wanted to do this coming tax?
Before the tax election starts, maybe? Yes, before tax election starts. It could be done at the next one. Their biggest thing is notifying taxpayers how it would, it would be handled in the school district. How would it be handled? Would they have to come into the school district here to go to the business office, or would they go to MNT? We have our tax collector there. Basically, my colleagues have said, they're all on a wait-and-see type of thing. If for some reason IRS says, "Hey, we're good to go, we'll implement it as soon as possible." But for this time, everybody's saying, "It's just not going to happen." It's a lot of work that, they're 99.9% sure that the federal government's going to just tell them, "Not going to happen." So, it's, it's a little bit of a wait-and-see to see what the IRS, I wish the IRS would come down. This decision supposedly is supposed to come out shortly. Would have liked to have seen it about July 1st.
They haven't had the forms ready yet, so it's going to start evaluating other things before they've got the...
Right. And New York State has not come down with any guidance about how to do this. This is strictly coming, this is strictly coming from our attorney interpreting the laws, that nothing has come down from New York State as to how it actually works, workshop on it. Tell us, because you could really screw this thing up really bad reading through this. It's very hard, and, you know, I understand the wanting of people who exceed the $10,000 to get that, but it doesn't look as though...
Not yet.
Not yet. I think it's...
Have you got calls from anybody, texts?
We got one call last fall when the federal government changed it.
Or they tried to pay head of time.
They actually wanted to, yes. And I mean, there was not even this level of guidance at that point. So, I mean, we're closer to the next deadline, and we still don't have clear-cut guidance from the IRS. And I don't think anybody, you may correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think anybody at the state level is making any bones about the fact that this was supposed to be a workaround, the federal change. But it's certainly not fully baked yet, and it's problematic on a lot of levels, and it would only take one decision by the IRS to say, "No, this is not, this is not proper." And the state could have actually continued to have it as deductible for New York State to say, "Yeah, your federal taxes say you're capped at $10,000, but what did you pay above and beyond $10,000? Because at least you could take it off your state taxes." They didn't do that.
Right. Nobody wants to do that for revenue, right?
They didn't do that. They look at it as going to be extra revenue. And so, they, they could have fixed it at least for the state level. Nothing they could do at the federal level, but at the state level, they could easily fix it to be deductible in New York State, but they didn't do that yet. May in the future, but they're, I'm not going to hold my, like I said, I'm not going to hold my breath because they're throwing money out the door that they would have. It's going to be real interesting, I mean, once the tax bills go out, and I'm sure we'll hear things at that point, about why are you doing this and things of that nature. It's a matter of really, until the IRS says what New York State is proposing is okay, I wouldn't want to be sticking my neck out and going through all the headaches of doing it. But if it does become a reality, then we will jump on it right away. We'll have to figure something out, how to manage that, and hopefully by that time, they will tell us step by step how this is supposed to work, not only for us at the school district, but how the taxpayers. I mean, because I could see that some person has a $10,000 bill coming to us and saying, "Here's my $10,000." "No, I need $10,523.96." "Huh? What? Huh? I don't get that." Well, take that number, times 95%, and you're going to get $10,000. So, you're going to pay us five, over $500, or over 5% to get that tax deductibility. Now, the question is now is, if like, and this is one of the things that someone said, "Well, we could collect the money and then, you know, it does add extra $500, that becomes school district property." You know? It would be a revenue source for us in the future. Great, but if the IRS knocks it down and says, "No way, I got to refund all of that money back." So, even collecting it now wouldn't be a value to us. But if that is the case, as I thought about it, is, we could easily hire another person to help us through this time because we'll also be getting extra income coming in because of that additional 5%.
Extra income will pay for the new person to help us collect it.
Correct, correct.
Mark?
So, there's so much wrong with this on so many levels, and I haven't really gone into a discussion about it, but I just want to add, on top of all that, it's not fair to the taxpayer who doesn't have the wealth to prepay their taxes to a charitable fund, even if they pay the extra fee, so that they can then get a deduction when there's other people in the community who do have the wealth that can do it. You know, it's just not fair to those people that can't afford to do it, to get the deduction.
Especially if your money's coming out of an escrow account. It's already been taken out of it, and, well, the escrow's one thing. If you want this charitable contribution, it's got to come from you, the homeowner. Eventually, you should get that money back, but it's a matter of us refund it to the escrow bank, and the escrow will be refunding it back to you. And I've gone for that in the past, so I'm not always that quick about wanting to get that money back. You eventually will get it. A lot of times, I say, "We'll keep it towards next year."
Does anybody else have questions?
Having just gotten this from our legal counsel and the fact that it is addressed to you as board members, we, we thought that we should take the time to let you guys know as, as easily as we can, complicated as it is, kind of what's going on, where the position we're taking, and every colleague in Dutchess County that we've talked to, and I'm guessing probably across most of the state, unless they already have a fund that's been set up in the past that maybe they would use, but that's pretty rare.
Yeah, that's pretty rare.
So, just...
Well, you never set up for this purpose, that's for sure.
Yeah. So, that's all. We're in a wait-and-see attitude right now. So, thanks, thanks, Tom, for that explanation. You had extra cooking for that.
Okay. 2018-19 Board Goals Development Updates?
Hello? You've all lived it.
Yeah.
So, we had a Board Goals Workshop right before this meeting, and I think we're, we're at the point of having identified four goal topics. What we're going to do at this point is to wordsmith some, some goal language with the, with the intent of having, having goal language to adopt at our, at our meeting on the 28th of August. So, that's, again, that's our goal. I think we're, you know, I think the board is all pretty much on board with the, with the four topics, that being negotiations with our bargaining units who still don't have, who we haven't settled contracts with, and technology integration being another, social and emotional wellness being another, and...
Help me on that first one.
Long-range planning.
How could I forget? Long-range planning. So, I think it's unanimous agreement on the part of the board that those are the topics. I think it's just a case of wordsmithing specific goal statements to, to communicate clearly what the outcomes of those goals would be, and then pretty confident we should be able to have that done in the next couple of weeks.
So, the long-range plan goal, which the Long Range Planning Committee is going to tackle, are you going to draft up the other three? You want me to do that?
I'll work on them.
Okay.
I think, I think the one is pretty easy, and then the other two, again, I mean, they're not, I had to lock myself up in a room for two weeks. I think we'll be, you know, I'll be able to come up with something, and with your help, because you'll give, you'll give me some feedback to tweak whatever, any of us comes up with. But yeah, I'll take a stab at the other three if you want to take a stab at the other three. Sounds good.
Okay. Board Committee Reports. We've got Rhinebeck Collaboration.
Yeah. Well, I, hopefully I can be quick on that one. I mentioned, I think, in our last meeting that Mark and I attended a meeting of the Rhinebeck Collaboration with Village Mayor Gary Bassett, Town Mayor, Town Supervisor Elizabeth Spinsia was not able to attend the last meeting or this meeting that we had about a week or so ago, but we had a few other guests at that meeting. One was Elaine Trampetto from Cape, Dutchess County organization dealing with addiction prevention and education. I think we've worked with them for, for many, many, many years on various projects, and I'm trying to recall the last name of the doctor, it was Wilson, I think. Dr. Wilson from Dutchess County Emergency Room was there at the invite of Gary Bassett, and Rick Lewitt was there also, a village council person. And the topic was solely to continue to discuss and plan an addictions presentation for the community. Not a school presentation, not a village presentation, not a town presentation, but a community presentation sponsored by the school, the village, and, and the town. We will likely host it here in our, in our auditorium because it's a, it's an appropriate public space in our community, and we're working with Cape and with Dr. Wilson to put together a panel, and the focus will be providing our community with information about addiction, about recovery, about the whole process, and giving them, whoever attends, some information on where they can go if they have problems, either personally or with their family or friends or whatever, to address that. I think we all agree that it's a, it's a, it's a topic that's being pretty broadly discussed in many communities, but in other communities, it's not. And we, all three of us feel that we should be putting that information out there for the members of our community who choose to, to attend. So, we're planning on something, to occur something in probably mid-October right now. We're also going to be working with our Schools Health and Wellness Committee, so stay tuned. But that's, it was a very positive conversation we're moving forward, and I'm pretty sure we'll get this thing off the ground this year. So, that was, that was the subtotal of that meeting, and I thank Mark for, for being there as well, representing.
Yeah, I think it, you know, it's really exciting that this town, village, and school group can actually work together to put something like this together, because normally, we've talked about, you know, shared services and, you know, how we can work together to accomplish our own work, but I think this is something that's a benefit to the entire community.
Agreed, agreed.
That's really good. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Personnel is next.
Should probably be an executive session, so we'll hold that off, given the topic.
All right. So, we'll move on to good news. Does anyone have any good news?
I think it's good news that our sports teams are back in action.
There you go. That's very good news. I think it's great news that the driveway is beginning to get marked for repair. Love that.
We're working on it. Just, just since you mentioned that, and I thought somebody might, that, that marking of the driveway is, is the result of only one out of the three bids we're required to collect before we can properly contract with somebody, so...
Calling all papers.
Well, we've been calling all papers, and as you might think, they're very, very busy this time of the year, although, you know, supervisor can come out like, like the one did this past week and mark up and estimate what cost would be. So, we're hoping to do it as soon as we get two more bids. Will probably not happen before the first day of school. I mean, we're only, we only have a couple more weeks, but could happen tomorrow if two more contractors gave us bids and we get one of them to come up here shortly thereafter. So, we are working on, I'm glad for no reason other than political reasons that they at least marked the driveway, so, and we're working on it.
Okay. Old Business?
I guess this, I don't know if it falls under old business. When I was reading from last meeting that I missed for the safety plan, you were asking by this meeting for feedback.
Oh, yes.
The only question I have is that a lot of the recommendations on there, would, there would be a cost associated with them, so I'm just, I don't have any issues with anything that was on there. I'm just, you know, for example, more SRO time, you know, that's a significant increase.
Yes.
So, I'm just wondering, if no one has any issues, what, what happens with the recommendations that cost money?
Well, we'll, we'll have to have those discussions. I mean, just because they're on the list doesn't mean we'll be able to do all of them. We'll do as many as we can with the, you know, with the resources that we have. Some of them are no cost, some of them are low cost, some of them are already, are already being paid for through the capital project, i.e. the new access control system and, and whatnot. Some of them are, you know, we could probably afford. I think the, probably of all the things on that list, the heaviest lift would be additional SRO time, but we're, we'll continue talking about them, and maybe some of those will have to be carried over to the next year, and will be part of the budget discussions, but...
So, they just stay as recommendations?
They're recommendations, yes. That's, that's correct. And, and I think we'll be able to accomplish a fair number of them, but probably not all of them, at least right, right away. But we are, I think we are making some progress towards improving school safety, and that was just a list of the, the consensus recommendations. I believe we're taking care of all of the consensus recommendations from both building level, safety teams, but there were other discussion items that were brought up that were not necessarily consensus recommendations of that group, but they, and some of them, though the groups themselves said that, you know, they need to do some more work on figuring out how much it would cost, and what we might be able to do, so...
And then the other... And then the other thing, normally, a board member doesn't sit on the safety committee, but that, is that a recommendation that...
Well, I'm thinking that, at the very least, given the current climate regarding school safety, that it would be a good idea to have a board member sit on that committee. So certainly, yeah, that's not a committee, it's going to meet once a month or whatnot, and I envision it being maybe, maybe three or four times a year, but I think, I think it would be a good, good idea.
So to that point, Liz, both you and Diane raised your hand. So you're thinking, Joe, that these will be after-school meetings, like 3:30 or whatever?
Yes. Because the majority of representatives are school employees, and I know it would be difficult for me to have evening, an evening meeting, much less pull them out of classes and whatever. I mean, it's like walking on ground last to get a good representation and see that meeting during the day. And we do try to stagger those meetings, but I would need somebody to be available maybe three or four times a year, one afternoon, after, sort of like, you know, 3:00 to 4:30 or whatever, so...
So do you guys want to rock, paper, scissors? Liz, you had mentioned that you might have conflicts in the fall.
Yeah, just after the festival, we don't. So it doesn't matter to me.
Me either.
So I'd say take it out back, ladies, and let us know who prevails.
All right.
And we won't be meeting again for at least a month and a half or so, so it's not like I need a decision tomorrow, but I'd like to know by the start of school, if that's possible.
All right. Any other old business?
I don't.
Okay. We have another opportunity for public comment, and unfortunately, nobody else has joined us, so we'll move on to other. Any other?
I don't have others. Any others?
Okay. And we can move on to action items. Would anybody like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Okay. Then, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? I would just like to thank the Class of 1998 for the generous donation of beautiful trees for our campus. It's really great. I'd also like to express our gratitude to, for the successful Donors' Choose application that Jill Simmons submitted. I think that's really terrific. So all those are in favor? That's unanimous. Motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to adopt the resolution to confirm tax rules and authorize the tax levy for the 2018-19 school year, see resolution attached?
So moved.
All those in favor? That motion passes.
We're going to, that's the one we need signatures on, right?
Want us to come to you?
Do you want, I don't know, do you want to pass it down?
Pass it around.
Pass it around. We'll have somebody...
Okay. All right. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to issue the tax warrant to the school tax collector to collect taxes in the total sum of $28,813,229 exclusive of star reimbursement. The tax collector is not responsible for the collection of that portion of the warrant. The collection period begins September 4th, 2018, and ends on November 2nd, 2018. Original warrant will be brought to the meeting to be signed by the board. That's what we're saying.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to adopt the following resolution? Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby authorizes MNT Bank to apply authorized-for Visa credit cards in the name of Rhinebeck Central School District at a maximum credit limit of $10,000 for the following district employees as per RCSD Policy Number 8334. Joseph Vallen, Superintendent of Schools, Thomas Brunel, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. Hang on. Okay. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the appointment of Ellen Twami Landivar as a long-term substitute in the position of Special Education Teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 4th, 2018, until on or about October 30th, 2018, at the pleasure of the board at Step 1 MA, $60,225 prorated, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2018-19. This appointment is to fill vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Kelly Lynch, Special Education Teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the appointment of Christine Martin to provide teacher aid services for one to two hours per day for each day of varsity cross-country practices and for meets as necessary and appropriate, effective for the 2018 varsity cross-country season, starting August 27th, 2018, in accordance with the 2017-18 anti-salary schedule?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve as a first reading the modifications to Board Policy Number 5250, Student Extra Classroom Activity Funds Management, and Board Policy Number 8124, now in the Lock Zone Program, see attached?
So moved.
Any discussion? I would just have a question on the Extra Classroom Activity Fund, since it's a new policy.
Yes, and that's the one Steve had raised some questions in the last week or two.
Well, it looks, it looks very comprehensive. I'm just wondering if there's going to be a complete review of charters and financial procedures based on our...
Tom, I think you addressed your question. Yeah, I mean, this is definitely going to allow, and how the process work, I've been working with Steve Banger, who's our Internal Claims Order, who's a former business official, who actually had a similar type of program in, oh, I think it's Hyland, I'm trying to find the false camera.
I think it was Hyland, actually.
In which, every year, basically, charters were given, yeah, the, each of the clubs would review the charter, and it would be renewed every year, go off to the board to understand what each of these groups is for, what their purpose is. And then, and then it's up for, really, the building principal to make sure that they're focused on what their charter says, and that they're not going off this way or that. It's really for them to become a lot more accountable and to get more involvement. That was the biggest thing with the audit was, nothing was really being done inaccurately. It's that the student participation and the bookkeeping and secretariat being the minutes were not being done by the students. The teachers were basically doing the books, basically, and that's not how it's supposed to be done. These are supposed to be run by the children, by the students, for the purpose intended. And that they're supposed to learn the business aspects of it, you know, when you're doing fundraising, profit and loss, things of that nature, and then basing on those decisions you made, what do you do the next time, and so on and so forth. So we want to bring a little bit more formality to this, and that's the purpose, is to lay this out so that everybody knows what's supposed to be happening, and that we actually also have, position by position, their duties, the advisors' duties, the secretary's duties, the treasurer's duties, the president's duties. So each of them will actually know what is expected of them, so that they know what the job entails. Plus, we'll be doing a lot of training, just so to get everybody up on board, from the advisors, the faculty advisors, to be there with the students. I think a couple of things that we also put in there is like the number of times that they need to meet. I think the original one said at least once a month. Well, that doesn't really work in some instances. So we said it must be at least a minimum of 10 times, keep attendance, things of that nature. So we can always go back and take a look to see which groups are being active and you feel as though are with the price of the advisor, because ultimately, that's what it's about, is from your perspective, is making sure that the students are doing what they're supposed to be doing, but you're also getting value from the taxpayers' dollars to say, yeah, that club is functioning the way we want it to, or this one isn't functioning. What can we do to make it functioning, or do you replace it with another club? So I know it's a little onerous, as far as that's concerned, that that is, we really took this basically from State Education Department, because this is really what they want, all school districts. We did change quite a few things in there, and I think we might have missed a place or two, when they used things like Chief Financial Officer and things of that nature. We wanted it more to building principles and that. So I might have missed a section, too, from Steve Banger. Might have missed a couple of those, and we can go back and make those changes.
Correct them before the second reading.
Yes, yes, we can definitely do that. Actually, he's coming in not just, it's coming Monday, so we'll be going over it again on Monday, and finalizing all the other, what we want to train the advisors and central treasurer and the treasurers. So we want to get more, definitely more involvement. Kids got to know what they're getting into.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's no doubt about it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We're withdrawing six point eight.
Yeah, we table it.
Okay. Okay. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of talking about employment history of particular persons?
So moved.
All those in favor? That motion passes.
Okay. Great.